Jacket. Tossed in the wash.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, May first, 2023. We have a very packed agenda, and it's a pleasure to see all of you here tonight. Thank you very much for coming. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell has been excused. Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstadter. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in recognition of our service, men and women serving this great nation at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we have a packed agenda tonight. It starts with Proclamations and Presentations, and we are pleased to recognize so many worthy events and organizations and cultures tonight. So our protocol, because we have six of these, is to quickly, when your name is called, approach the podium with the appointed council member. We'll present the proclamation to you, and our communications director has asked that we do an independent individual photo each time. So we're going to roll through these, not that we want to dissuade you from taking your moment to shine. So we're going to enjoy the moment and lead with the proclamation recognizing May 2023 as Asian American Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And for this, I'm pleased to call on Lua Pritchard, Executive Director of the Asian Pacific Cultural Center, to present the proclamation with Councilmember Dawn Anderson, who has spent a bit of time in various Southeast Asia countries himself.
Well, this is a great pleasure for me to be able to present this proclamation. I consider Lua a friend. We have a long association with the Asian Pacific community. As the mayor indicated, I lived in the Pacific Rim for three years. I have property in Hawaii. I kind of gravitate that way. No Hawaiian blood, no Asian blood, but I enjoy all of the cultures immensely. So whereas, in May, we take time to reflect on and call special attention to the achievements and contribution of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders in our community, our state, and our country. And whereas, in 1978, Congress created Asian Pacific American Heritage Week in May to coincide with two milestones in Asian Pacific American history: the arrival of the first Japanese immigrants, May 7, 1843, to the United States, and the Chinese workers' role in building the Transcontinental Railroad, completed May 10, 1869. And whereas, Lakewood's connection with the Asian community goes back decades, from welcoming immigrants to the area as they arrived alongside service members stationed at Joint Base Lewis McCord, to supporting business development and expansion endeavors within the city, and celebrating the many cultures, customs, and heritage of the kaleidoscope of countries from the Asian continent and Pacific Islands represented in our community. And whereas, Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders comprise nearly 12% of the city's population, according to the 2020 census, and nationally are some of the fastest-growing racial and ethnic groups. And whereas, Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders are some of the most devoted community members, who serve as leaders in our military, in law enforcement, as experts in the fields of science, medicine, and technology, as teachers, as distinguished lawyers, as innovative farmers and business owners, as nonprofit executives, and as leaders within the community and beyond. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims May 2023 as Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Lakewood, and encourages all residents to recognize the vital role Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders play in our community, and urges residents to visit the Asia Pacific Cultural Center to learn more about their programs and commitment to bridge communities and generations through art, culture, education, and business. Proclaim this first day of May 2023, Jason Whalen, Mayor.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and respected members of the council, thank you so much. This is wonderful, and our population of Asian Pacific Island people who live in the city of Lakewood, take our hat off to you. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Lua. And if you join us down here for a photograph, if you joined Dawn and all of us down here. Okay, that's just a bit of things to come. There'll be a bit of up and down tonight. Next proclamation is that declaring May 2023 as Hunger Awareness Month. And for this, I will ask Deputy Mayor Moss to meet with Claire Aligian, Deputy Director, Emergency Food Network, to receive the proclamation, followed by a photograph.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to read this proclamation in honor of Hunger Awareness Month, and it reads, "And whereas, approximately 94,860 adults, childrens, senior active military, and veterans of Pierce County struggle daily with the uncertainty of where the next meal will come from, suffer from food insecurities and the exposure of malnutrition and other adverse health outcomes. And whereas, it is important to address the food insecurities indulged by, endured by the children in Pierce County, and the well-being of our children is an investment in our community's future health, education performance, and economic vitality. And whereas, local food pantries experience an average of 190,000 visits every month from people struggling with unemployment, underemployment, and other physical and some economic challenges. And whereas, Emergency Food Network must maintain its capacity to distribute more than 12 million pounds of food to each of the 75 pantry food pantry, pardon, food pantry pantries, mills, sites, and shelters every year. And whereas, inflation and rising fuel costs affects Pierce County residents and the local emergency food system, and have already resulted in increased visits to the emergency food system. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaim May 23 as Hunger Awareness Month in the city of Lakewood, and encourages all residents to support Hunger Awareness Month, and recognize Emergency Food Networks and its allies for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to providing food for residents in the city of Lakewood and Pierce County. Proclaim this first day of May 2023, signed, Jason Whalen, Mayor."
Thank you.
Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and Council, thank you so much for once again recognizing May as Hunger Awareness, Hunger Awareness Month in Lakewood. It has never been a busier time for our partner programs in Pierce County. Last month, for the first time ever, our network served over 200,000 visits in a single month. I think any of us who has gone to the grocery store recently has seen how expensive eggs, milk, meat, all of the basic food we need to thrive and live a healthy life. All those items are more expensive, and so everyone that was already struggling is struggling more, and folks who've never visited food pantry before need our help. Our Hunger Walk is a Saturday at Fort Silicon Park here in Lakewood, and the Letter Carriers Food Drive is next Saturday on May 13. Folks can just leave a bag of food at their mailbox to help keep food pantries full this summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a proclamation declaring May 7 through May 13, 2023, as Water Week. And for this, Councilmember Bokey will be joined at the podium by Greg Rudisky, Board Vice President, and Randy Black, General Manager of Lakewood Water District, to receive the proclamation. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Whalen. Whereas water is a fundamental part of our everyday lives and serves as the basic support system for all life on our planet, and whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life of our residents and joy, and whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, and support for our economy, and whereas hard work is performed by the entire water sector, whether designing capital projects, operators, ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to customers' taps. And whereas, the pandemic shone a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas, the residents of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims May 7, 2023, through May 13, 2023, as Drinking Water Week, and urges all residents to observe the week with activities to enhance awareness about drinking water and the benefits of drinking water. Proclaim this first day of May 2023, Jason Whalen, Mayor.
Gentlemen.
Yeah.
Feel free.
Well, thank you, Mayor Whalen, and members of the council. I just thought I'd share just a little bit of information about the importance of water here in the city of Lakewood. We all know that it's an economic engine and in support of what the city does. Each day, everybody gets up in the morning, maybe takes a shower, takes a bath, flush the toilet, prepares a cup of coffee, and then maybe washes fruit, vegetables for snacks for the day, all because safe, reliable drinking water is at their tap. In the city of Lakewood, last year in 2022, 2.4 billion gallons of water were sold to residents in Lakewood. The average day demand for the city of Lakewood was 6.6 million gallons a day, approximately 104 gallons per person per day on average, and in the summertime, 193 gallons per day per person in the summer. One of the things that we know that there's 2.2 billion people, according to the World Health Organization, that do not have healthy, safe, reliable drinking water. And Lakewood, we have that, and we have been doing that since, for eight years with, this is our 85th year celebration, since 1943 Lakewood has been serving the community here. We also test over 40 different samples for safe drinking water every month. We also provide annual programs such as hydrant maintenance, valve matrons, as well as testing our customers' meters. We also provide a financial health balance that offers the lowest rates to our rate customer because of the fiscal responsibility of the district. We're proud to serve the city of Lakewood. We want to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Next, we have a proclamation declaring May 12, 2023, as Childcare Provider Appreciation Month. And I'd like to call on Councilmember Branstadter to present the proclamation. I believe we have Wileene Weatherspoon, Code Director, with Little Scholars Early Learning Center, to receive the proclamation. Welcome.
Yeah, thank, thanks for being here and representing all the other professionals in your, in your business that, that we're fortunate to have in the city of Lakewood to be able to go and do that. Proclamation, whereas Childcare Aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on May 12, 2023, for Childcare Provider Appreciation Day. And whereas childcare offers a safe, nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide, and is a vital force in our economy, allowing parents the opportunity to remain in the workforce while their children are safely cared for. And whereas childcare providers were essential long before the pandemic, but the last two years illuminated just how indispensable childcare providers are, not only for the well-being of our young children and their families, but also for the economic security of our region. And whereas childcare programs are mostly small businesses, run in staff predominantly by women, and are still recovering from health and financial hardships due to impacts from the pandemic, while they continue to meet the needs of families. And whereas the city of Lakewood recognizes that childcare continues to be a lifeline for families and the economy, and as such has provided much-needed support to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare by prioritizing its American Rescue Plan Act allocations to support youth and families. And whereas our future depends on the quality of early experience provided to young children today, and support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council to hereby proclaim May 12, 2023, as Childcare Provider Appreciation Day, and urges all residents to recognize childcare providers for their important work. Proclaim this first day of May 2023, Jason Whalen, Mayor. And again, I present this to you on behalf of all of your colleagues and other professionals in this field that serve our community, and we're really fortunate to have the mix that we do.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I did not plan to talk. Ms. Adriana had a family emergency, but we all want to say thank you guys for this proclamation. It is very important that we do continue to learn and grow so that we can provide quality childcare, because you know, without going to, having that reassurance, having that nurturing and environment that we provide to the families, they wouldn't be able to go to work and be successful the way that they are. And you guys acknowledging us is a big thing, because sometimes we feel like we are unnoticed, and this is a lot for us. So on behalf of Little Scholars, the Livingston family, and Adriana and myself, we thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the 55th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, and I will be joined at the podium. I believe we have representatives from the Tacoma Pierce County Association of Realtors present tonight, Horvie Erling, Mike Larson, I don't see Mike in the audience, Morgan Ray, and Nisha Smith, who will join me up at the podium. Well, in my day job, I do a lot of work with real estate and housing, so I am pleased on behalf of the city council here in the city of Lakewood to present this proclamation. Whereas, on April 11, 1968, the Federal Fair Housing Act was enacted into law, recognizing that no American should lose the right to purchase or rent housing of their choice because of their race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, national origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity. And whereas, this year marks the 55th anniversary of this Monumental Civil Rights Act of Congress. And whereas, the city of Lakewood is committed to the mission and intend to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas, equality of opportunity for all is a fundamental policy of this nation and our state. And whereas discriminatory housing practices create racial and economic segregation in communities that can lead to disparate outcomes in the overall quality of life. And whereas, the city of Lakewood believes that access to fair housing laws have made our community stronger and our city more vibrant. And whereas, the city of Lakewood is committed to promoting housing choices and fostering inclusive neighborhoods free from housing discrimination. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council does hereby recognize the 55th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act, and we recognize the many people and organizations in our community who have opened the doors of housing opportunity to all residents. Proclaim this first day of May 2023, Jason Whalen, Mayor. On behalf of all of us, thank you for all the work you're doing. On behalf of the Tacoma Pierce County Association of Realtors, we thank you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jasmine Jefferson. I'm the designated broker and owner of Windermere Bowls Lakewood, right across the street. I want to take a moment to acknowledge that while this came in effect in 1968, that my grandparents moved here in the 50s and were subject to steering and lived in a community that did not allow, or where only black people were allowed to live, and that was in 1964 here in Pierce County. This means a lot, not only to myself, but to all of the practitioners of the Tacoma Pierce County Association of Realtors. Thank you so much for the acknowledgement of the Lakewood City Council. This, in conjunction with the historic legislation being passed out of Washington State, means a lot to so many people and is moving the needle in the right direction.
Thank you. Next, we will present a proclamation recognizing May 2023 as Building Safety Month. And for this, I'll have Councilmember Laura Sella meet with our building official, Rafik Gindi, here from the city of Lakewood, to receive the proclamation.
Great. Whereas, the city of Lakewood recognizes that our community depends on the role safety plays in our homes, buildings, and infrastructure, both in everyday life and when disaster strikes. And whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through devotion of public servants, like building safety and fire prevention officials, engineers, builders, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these are experts in the built environment who create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, work, learn, and play. And whereas, we invite our residents to join us in supporting and recognizing these experts alongside the Washington Association of Building Officials and local chapters throughout the state, representing the state of Washington in national and local matters of public safety. And whereas, modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as snowstorms, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the Washington Association of Building Officials and International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, it starts with you, the theme for Building Safety Month 2023, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas, each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Building Safety Month in the city of Lakewood, and encourages our residents to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. Proclaim this first day of May 2023, and signed by Jason Whalen, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'd like to acknowledge the Fire Chief, Wes Pierce, Fire Chief. He's a, Wes Fire, Wes Pierce Fire has to be a good, great partner with us, with the building department, and we work side by side. And I'd like to acknowledge them and thank them for their continued support. I didn't know I'll make a little speech, but a few things I'd like to mention that throughout the month, we are gonna approach the community by publishing every week. I think it's a program that first week, there's gonna be few tips, second week, third week, until fifth week. third week until fifth week. Uh, and it's gonna be different tips every week, and it's gonna be focusing on how you improve, uh, your house, or simple tips about smoke alarms, carbon monoxide, exiting, uh, eagerest windows, very simple things that very, very critical for life safety. Um, the second point I'd like to make, which is, as I'm sitting here listening to all the proclamation that came before me, uh, Emergency Food Network, we are about to celebrate the start construction of their second warehouse, the big one. Uh, we, we worked with them earlier last year and had a new office. And, uh, the water district, we were working, continue working with them on their expansion of the new wells and the building of the infrastructure. Uh, so, building department plays a role with the community, not only on the aspect of safety, but providing the community with support to the needs. And I thank, uh, the support of Mr. Mayor and council members for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Brandy.
My last note, I always have another. Uh, so I, I brought in a sample of some of the tips that you could start seeing on the website, just if you interested in it, but it gives you a flavor of what's every week we're gonna get to have on the website. And I'll leave it on the table here.
All right. And then we're always pleased to have a business showcase. And tonight we're going to celebrate Crane's Creations with the owners, David and Charlene Olson. Are they here in the audience today? Come on up. Well, she might say that, you know, she's the better half, David, but please, yeah, but join me at the podium anyway. Well, as many of us know from getting flowers either for our spouses or for our children at various prom events, Crane's Creations is a longtime Lakewood business specializing in floral creations. Crane's Creations 2.0 is the new iteration of this Lakewood treasure. Owners David and Charlene Olson purchased the business three years ago. The Olsons worked with the son of the original owners as they took over the business. They retained the employees and continue to celebrate the hard work of the florists and staff who make Crane's Creations 2.0 a local go-to for the community's needs. The focus remains exceptional customer service, beautiful design, and custom design. This proclamation is our certificate of recognition from the city council awarded to Crane's Creations 2.0 as our May 2023 Business Showcase. Crane's Creations 2.0 is recognized as the city of Lakewood's May 2023 Business Showcase for its continued commitment to its employees for providing exemplary customer service to the Lakewood community and its plans for future growth. And so, David, I'm gonna present this on behalf of, of both you and your wife, and then I understand we have a, a short video highlighting the business that someone's going to press a button and play. And then I'll give you the floor, sir. So let me get a picture here real quick, and then we'll get the, um, the video. And then we'll give you a chance to explain a little bit more, so.
So I'm Dave Olson. My wife and I, Charlene, own the store. We've been in business, we have, for just over three years, but Crane's Creations has been in the area for well over 50 years, serving the South Sound. I've, I've been in management my entire life. My wife was a, uh, in medical administration for a long time. We decided we wanted to do something to put smiles on people's faces. And when Crane's Creations came available, uh, we looked into it. We got the opportunity to work with Bob and Roma, the son of the original owner of Cranes, who was Joanne Crane, uh, got to work with him for two or three months before we actually bought the store. Uh, we just wanted to do something to put smiles on people's faces and take care of them, get out of that management mode. I think what I'm most proud of is, one, our employees, because it takes a special person. You wouldn't think it, but the employees here are on their feet all day long. If they're not with a customer, then they're taking care of the flowers or they're cleaning up. So it's, it's a lot, and I'm very thankful that we have some excellent employees to, to make it happen and to maintain that Crane's name for Lakewood. We wanted to carry on the Crane's tradition, which is, uh, exceptional customer service, um, beautiful design, uh, and custom design, and custom is our specialty. Um, somebody has a favorite flower, a favorite color. We want to make sure we, uh, implement that into the design, but also we want, uh, flowers that last. We had to prove to the existing customers when we took it over that we were gonna still do that, and it, we've been embraced with open arms. It's, it's incredible. The current customers in the Lakewood and surrounding areas have stayed with us, and we've gained more customers. Even on our website, the main banner on the website says, "We have the best customers in the world, and we love them." And they're mostly from Lakewood.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, council members, first, thank you, but I'd like to point out one small thing. I, we've had the store three years, and there's this real cool picture on the wall in there of Bob and Roma, and I never knew what they were doing. One of the, uh, designers that's been there the entire time, like 26 years, uh, pointed out that that was when Bob and Roma won the Business Showcase in 2015. So thanks for getting back to us in eight years. It's appreciated. Thank you.
You bet. Come on up, take a quick photograph. Hank, as they say, the time has come, my friend. Time has come for our youth council report, and we're always pleased to have our youth council member Hank Jones to present the report. He does ruin inch every time.
I'm almost there. Yeah, counting down the days. Um, so, good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and the council. My name's Hank Jones, and I'll be delivering our youth council report for the month of May. At our meeting this month, our main topic of discussion was continuing to plan our third and final roundtable for the year. This one's centering on police accountability. We have invited our new police chief to the event, which will be held in these council chambers on May 16th, where we will be having serious conversations about the relationships between youth and the LPD, and what role the department will play in the future vitality of our city. Our council has also been busy over the past month working in the community. On Saturday the 22nd, many of our members showed up at the Parks Appreciation Day event at Fort Silicon Park and other parks there at Lakewood to continue to beautify some of the most beautiful parks of our city and to preserve the natural characteristics of our parks that hold so much value. We also held an event for new recruits at the Fort Silicon Pavilion to bring some new members into the fold for our next session in the fall, and we had great turnout, which I am pleased to report. I unfortunately am aging out of the youth council very soon. I don't know if I can even call myself a youth anymore, um, but I hold plenty of optimism that the future of this council is in good hands. And on that note, our council will be closing out for the year in June, but before that happens, we still have a few more meetings and a few more events ahead of us, including our capstone for the year and the Lakewood Youth Summit. I look forward to sharing more with you next month for the final time. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Jones? You guys are all set for the youth council or the summit?
Yeah, we have, um, our location booked. We have, you know, a pretty, um, ironed-out itinerary planned out, so.
Good.
Yeah, we're excited, and we're excited to see you there, that everyone can make it.
Absolutely. All right. We're looking forward to it. Well, have a good night. I'm sure the, uh, the homework awaits, so thanks for coming.
Not so much of it anymore. Thank goodness.
All right.
But yeah, thank you.
If there's not enough homework, we'll bring that up to the, uh, school board chair, who's next. So we'll make sure that there's plenty of extra homework assigned. Next, we have the Clover Park School District report on homework, apparently, uh, by the, uh, Director Alyssa Anderson Pearson.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. Um, been busy in the schools as always. Um, if you haven't already heard, our Lakes High School senior, um, a Lakes High School senior was selected as the Pierce County Daffodil Queen, um, Lauren Hernandez. And I've heard, I wasn't able to attend the daffodil parade, but, um, Superintendent Banner actually rode on the float, and they got to go first, so it was very exciting. They were first. And he was going off to a tropical vacation, but not before he rode in it, rode in the parade. I, uh, Director Jacobs, who's obviously been on the board for a while, said this was the first time she could remember a superintendent joining the festivities, so he wasn't gonna miss out, I guess. So we're very proud of her, and she's the first daffodil queen from Clover Park in 19 years, and she will receive a $5,000 scholarship from the Washington State Fair Foundation, as well as $1,000 scholarship from the Daffodil Scholarship Foundation. We also are launching, oh, we launched a new K-12 Alternative Learning Environment School. So during, uh, COVID, we obviously had a virtual option, um, but then when we brought students back, the virtual option, we had to outsource, and there wasn't as much live instruction, and we were losing some of the virtual, um, students. So we were trying to figure out how to gain, um, get some of our students to either come back, or just if that's what you wanted to choose for your child, um, virtual rather than in person. We wanted to have a better option where it was actually our teachers rather than, um, outsourcing. So that, um, that was completed, and we are voting on the name, uh, on our next meeting on Monday. So the new school is meant for any student needing a learning environment outside of a typical neighborhood school, and combines the district's most personalized programs into a school that serves students in unique ways to reach their educational and life goals. So the enrollment will begin April 13th for the 2023-2024 school year. And one thing that's also different is you enroll at this school, where previously if you wanted to be virtual, you had to go to your homeschool. So it was just an added step. So this will be easier for, um, parents to sign up, or guardians to sign up their students, um, for online. And then there was a naming committee considering a request to rename the Clover Park High School baseball field. Um, so they were considering a request, um, to honor the former longtime educator and coach Merle Heg, uh, Hegbo. And he worked in the district from 1958 to 1998, and he was the assistant boys' basketball coach from 1958 to 1963, and head boys', but baseball, I'm sorry if I said basketball, I meant baseball. I'm not sure now that I'm thinking of it. Um, he was the head boys' baseball coach from 1964 to 1998. And he also served as assistant football coach, assistant boys' basketball coach, and head boys' basketball coach. And so the naming committee met, and there was overwhelming support for the name change. So we will be voting on that as well on Monday. Um, summer school is now enrolling for all grade levels, and the deadline is April 14th. Um, April is the month of the military child, and everyone's favorite time of year. Smarter Balance Assessment Testing is currently ongoing at Clover Park. Um, as I've mentioned up here before, national test score averages are down, but we're hoping that we'll take a turn for the better. Um, I know testing is a stressful time for students, I'm sure teachers and administration. So hopefully, we're hoping that now that the pandemic is behind us, we'll start seeing some, um, positive results. Um, let's see, we also had our district steam fair, and we had good participation there. And kindergarten registration for fall is open, and, um, I, kind of going off my notes here, but I did notice that, um, you're voting on the, the agreement for the extra-duty police officers, officers or our school resource officers, and I just wanted to say thank you for that, the support and partnership that we have with LPD is just wonderful. And just a little quick story of how I appreciate them. I was invited to a, um, kind of a roundtable fishbowl activity, I guess is what it was called. Um, some students had raised some concerns with the, um, the police flag when there was the Hops versus Teachers basketball game last year. And of course, there were very strong feelings on both sides about that. There was a lot of chatter, and people were going to the superintendent, and the superintendent said, "Well, why don't we just get everyone in the same room?" Which is, I think, a unique perspective, instead of just making a decision. And so, um, Lakewood police officers, as well as, there was a few detectives, I think, from, uh, from Puyallup, and then the superintendent's, um, youth council in, um, and, yeah, his youth council. They all came together, everyone agreed, um, they had it set up pretty cool, um, where the, each group was asked questions, the other side was not able to interrupt. It was about stereotypes on both sides, and like, what, what are your, what do you think people think of police officers? What do you think people think of high schoolers? And anyway, it was set up, like, there's not gonna be any resolution, a decision is not gonna be made if the flag can stay or go, but you guys are gonna have a discussion. It was, it was very eye-opening, and I was just thankful the superintendent allowed the students to have a voice, also allowed the police officers to have a voice, and I think both sides learn things, maybe the history of the flag that people were not aware of, how students felt. And anyway, I, I'm sure there were a lot of feelings in the room, but everyone, um, handled it very well. And I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to the police officers who were willing to join and listen. And I think that just shows the relationship that our district has and the superintendent has, um, with community members. Yeah. Um, that's my report for tonight. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Brandstetter.
Thanks, sir. Yeah. I, I was wondering, the, with Memorial Day coming up, is, what's the status of the Arlington Project for this year?
Oh, yes, that is happening. I did get an email about it. I don't think, I don't, not on my notes, so I don't know the exact details, but I did receive a calendar invite to it, so it is happening, and I can get the details over to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right.
In addition to approval of the, um, the contract for the resource officers, I just want to let you know that we are approving a construction contract to finish the sidewalks on 112 on 112th Street, just uh by Clover Park there. So that'll be a nice improvement to that corner. No, you're fine. Yeah, no, no. It's a reaction I often get, so you're fine. Yeah, thank you. It's all good. All good, all good. Yeah, exactly. She spent many years not paying attention to the mayor.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, she's she's used to it now. Exactly.
All right. Well, that concludes our proclamation presentation section of tonight's agenda, unless somebody else has one they failed to mention that you want to bring up tonight. Do we have any more proclamations, Madam Clerk? Just checking. Okay. Well, now we enter to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments certainly may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Schumacher at 6,000 Main Street Southwest Lakewood, Washington, or to her email address, B Schumacher at CityofLakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to us electronically. The clerk will read the names into the record of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Okay, thank you. There is a public hearing tonight on the 2023 carryforward budget adjustments. So if you are here or intend to speak to that particular item, I'd ask that you wait uh for that portion of tonight's agenda. Otherwise, you certainly may comment on other items relating to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that if you have comments that are uh specific to a council member that you uh perhaps refrain from presenting those in public comments, you can certainly submit them in writing. Uh, but we're looking for constructive comments that pertain to city business. Virtual comments are also authorized. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, you'll need to join the Zoom meeting via telephone dialing the number reflected on the screen or uh going to Zoom, entering the meeting ID number and using the star nine feature to raise your hand to be called upon. At this time, I will first call on those who are in person, who have uh signed in to speak during the public comment period. And I have a sign-in sheet with no names listed, but that does not preclude anyone who may be here from addressing the council during the public comment period. So if you'd like to address any item pertaining to city business, uh feel free to step up to the podium and the clerk will set your time. Please state your name and residence so that we can have our record clear. Seeing no individuals in the audience wishing to address council during the public comment period, we'll now turn to those who may be present uh on Zoom. Madam Clerk, I see one hand, two hands raised. So let's call on Amelia Escobedo first.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Amelia Escobedo and I live in Lakewood, Washington. Uh, today, it has been three years since the murder of Said Waking. Mike Wiley is still currently employed with the Lakewood Police Department. Today, we had a celebration of li- life for Said Waking. I stood and hugged Said's mother and his sisters at the celebration. I drove down the same street where he was pulled over, Whitman Avenue. And yet, even though the stop sign is further down, you still have to row forward just to see oncoming traffic. When Said Waking was shot by Mike Wiley, Said said he did not want to get shot, but it still happened. Aid was not given after Said was shot. Instead, Wiley just stares at Said as he is dying in his seat. Wiley was wearing the blue line patch, which represents racism, hate, and insurrectionists that follow the clan of terror. Pensions should be taken from officers who shoot and kill people that they are supposed to protect and serve. It is a reality to many people in Washington State. I set up a table with people that have passed due to police violence. And it was more than I could. There was too many to put on the table. And that should say a lot. I need you to step up as a city council. And if you can't take their pensions, something else has to happen. So there'll be a ripple effect where they will be in fear to make these rash decisions and then kill people with no repercussion. Nothing is happening. Like I said, it's been three years since the death of Said Waking. And I know that you don't like to hear his name and I know that you you guys just want to brush it under the red. But this is a real civil, open case. It is happening here in Lakewood. And I just want to say justice for Said Waking and change needs to happen. Thank you.
Next is, I believe Dennis Howgan, you had your hand raised or not, sir?
You can hear me, I hope?
Yes.
Dennis Howgan, Sioux Falls, former Sioux Falls, South Dakota, former resident of Lakewood. I'm looking at the next two years and I'm hearing some of the, some of the information from there, but one of the information that I don't know if it's correct or not is you're possibly expecting 250 people to live in a small home development in the wetlands somewhere. I would have to say that over the next two years, you'd be lucky if only 250 more uh homeless people were there because, as you know, the border is open. And now Title 42 is not gonna be used in ten days. And they're expecting millions to come across that border. Well, somewhere those people have to go. And you're a sanctuary state. You welcome illegal immigrants. And um you voted in every way possible not to support going through the gate so that you can plan for it. And that's probably because there seems to be a mathematical ability shortage, you know? Bill Bennett talks about how important reading math is for first through fifth graders. Because that's when they can, if they have math, they can learn to be logical. They can learn to anticipate uh what's too much. You know, they won't pour a five gallon pail of water in a quart jar and not expect something to run over. But there seems to be no interest in numbers in some of these areas. And I think that uh uh I think that Seattle is certainly has trouble with numbers and estimating things. And there are constant push to all the other communities. So I would expect in in two years, you could have anywhere from 2,500 to 25,000 people in and around Lakewood without homes. And uh like uh one of the videos that I watched, they asked homeless personalities, do I? He said, well, it's easy. Uh, but we just steal food because, you know, there isn't much uh there isn't much uh motive to go out and arrest people over just small shoplifting. And when I need drugs, I use my my debit card. They just go and you put your card in the, in the machine and uh somebody from the cartel is willing to sell you drugs right then and there. So you're gonna look a lot different in two years than you do now because the pressure is gonna be great and there's no enthusiasm for any kind of enforcement at the border. Thank you.
Next, Kyle Manglonia.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, um everyone present. Sorry, I'm only here virtually. My name is Kyle Manglonia, proud resident of the City of Lakewood. I'm a member of the Lakewood Promise Advisory Board, public servant for the state of Washington. My wife is also a teacher at the Silicon School District. This is just a short and quick shout out to um some of the public servants working in Lakewood City Government, particularly the Public Works Department and to put his name on the record, Troy, um one of the city engineers, um who is just so great about not only his interaction with the public, but posting updates on really important things that affect uh those that live in in our neighborhood. And we're expecting some major construction happening as improvements go on in Port Silicon Park, but also on Elwood Drive, which happens to be our own driveway. So I'm just really, really thankful when um employees of the city, public servants, really take that time, not just to not just to make the plans and execute them, but be really sensitive to the public need and questions and inquiries. So shout out to everyone working in that way and for keeping that relationship up with us proud residents of Lakewood. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. Next, James Dunlop.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hello. My name is James Dunlop and I am a Lakewood resident. Uh, I kind of want to sort of change the subject in terms of what I've, I usually talk about. Um and I do want to talk about the education in Lakewood. Um you know, I understand, but it is an incredibly divisive issue, uh the schools in Lakewood. And I sometimes feel when I come to city council meetings and you have representative of, representatives of school board giving reports that you kind of give them an easy ride. And I also feel that it's kind of symptomatic of perhaps an American problem. Um, speaking as an outsider, that in America, you tend to divide everything up. You know, you are the city council. You have your responsibilities and uh the school board have their responsibilities. And uh that's it. It's this, there's this, this divided jurisdiction and you, you know, you don't seem to really interact with what's going on um in the, in the school board. You know, you just seem to kind of accept what you're told and everything's fine. Yet clearly it is not fine. Um, and I, you know, if you look at results, um you know, results in terms of English Language Arts and Math over the last 10 years. Um, you will see, as perhaps you know, that Lakewood's relative performance has been declining um for the last 10 years. I mean, twenty, as far as I understand the statistics, in 2013 Lakewood was approximately at the state level, you know, was roughly at the state level. It is now pretty much off the top of my head, maybe in the fifth percentile. It's really, really bad. And it's not enough to point to graduate, you know, to graduation as statistics. I know that, you know, people on the right, you're getting at it. Yeah, I'm not coming from, obviously, as you appreciate, I'm not coming from a right wing perspective. But there's a problem. And I do think that the that the school board by not, by not really addressing the issue is causing is is causing a lot of division. And you know, they are almost encouraging the right. And so as a city council, I think you need to realize that what's happening in the schools is affecting Lakewood. I mean, for example, anyone buying a property in Lakewood can check this local school ratings. So it's actually affecting the city. So what I would like to suggest is that the city council stop giving the school board um an easy ride and start to address what is the problem in Lakewood schools because there is a huge problem. And you can't just pretend that it's, well, maybe you feel it is not, isn't your jurisdiction, but you've got to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last hand I see raised to address council during the public comment portion, at least the virtual public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Madam Clerk, do you see any other hands raised or individuals on any phone line wishing to address council?
Uh, Mayor, there are no other hands raised to provide comments at this time.
I'll declare the public comment period closed. Now turn to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of April 10th, 2023. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of April 17th, 2023. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $2,887,277.36 for the period of March 16th, 2023 through April 19th, 2023. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,944,305.25 for the period of March 16th, 2023 through April 15th, 2023. E, motion number 2023-46, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Clover Park School District for Extra Duty Police Services School Resource Officers. F, motion number 2023-47, authorizing the award of a construction contract to R.L. Alia Company in the amount of $691,171.50 for the construction of the 112th Street Southwest Clover Park High School Sidewalk Project. G, motion number 2023-48, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Puget Paving and Construction, Inc. in the amount of $367,033 for the 2023 roadway patching project. H, motion number 2023-49, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Sound Pacific Construction LLC in the amount of $2,189,403 for the construction of the Angle Lane Elwood Drive Pedestrian Improvement Project. I, motion number 2023-50, approving the 2022 Transportation Benefit District TBD Annual Report. J, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, planning commission meeting minutes of April 5th, 2023.
Thank you. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? It's been moved by Councilmember Brandstetter, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? I'll just say uh for myself that I am pleased to see the significant, significant construction contracts uh going out the door at this time after approval by council. These are really great projects, both for uh the park at Port Silicon Park in the neighborhood in that area, but also the safety improvements on 112th adjacent to Clover Park High School. So that's just fabulous to see. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. We turn to the regular agenda. This is the public hearing and appeal. Madam Clerk?
This is the date set for a public hearing on the 2023 carryforward budget adjustment.
Thank you very much. This is a matter which we studied at some length during our study session last week, but for this, we'll call on our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus, to provide an overview.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. The carryforward budget adjustment, the purpose of this is to revise the 2023 and 24 ending fund balance, beginning fund balance with the results of the 2022. Um, they also incorporate items that were approved by the city council, appropriate projects funded by grants and contributions, continuation of capital projects, as well as new allocations as necessary. So with this budget adjustment, I'm primarily focusing on the general fund as the uh other funds are restricted or are for special purposes. Um, with this budget adjustment, the general fund maintains its 12% general fund reserves as well as the $2 million for the Economic Development Opportunity Fund. The proposed ending fund balance at the end of 2024 of $7,543,000 uh meets the 12% as well as the Economic Development Fund. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Kraus before we commence the public hearing on the 2023 carryforward budget adjustments? Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Appreciate your work. I just want to um publicly thank you and your team for doing such an excellent job implementing and exercising uh your administrative expertise with council's financial policies and goals because the investments reflected, even with this budget adjustment document, the investments as projected here are significant for the community in terms of the infrastructure improvements, the park improvements, and all of the other improvements that'll enhance the welfare and livability of Lakewood as a great community. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
This is the date set for the public hearing on the 2023 carryforward budget adjustment. Public testimony on this hearing is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to Ms. Schumacher, our city clerk, at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email at B Schumacher at CityofLakewood.us. Testimony received an hour before the meeting has been provided to the city council electronically and helps establish a record for this public hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the names of any individuals who have submitted written testimony in advance.
Mayor, we received no testimony in advance of this evening's meeting.
Very good. Let that not deter you. Testimony is allowed. Testimony is allowed by both in person and virtual testimony. It's limited to three minutes per person, similar to our public comment period. If you'd like to provide live virtual testimony, you'll need to join join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number listed on the dais there. And or join the Zoom meeting as an attendee entering the meeting ID number as indicated, using the star nine to raise your hand to speak. So at this time, I have no individuals who have signed in on the public hearing sheet to address council in person. Are there any individuals in the audience wishing to address the council during or provide testimony rather at this public hearing on the 2023 carry forward budget adjustments? Seeing none, we'll now turn to those who may be appearing virtually. Madam Clerk, do you see any hands raised to provide testimony during this public hearing on the 2023 carry forward budget adjustment?
Mayor, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. Then I'll declare the public hearing closed. We now turn to resolutions. Resolution 2023-05, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2023-05, adopting the fiscal year 2023, July 1, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, Joint Tacoma and Lakewood Consolidated Annual Action Plan, including amendments to fiscal year 2021 Consolidated Annual Plan Action Plan.
Thank you very much. And I will ask our housing program manager, Jeff Gum, who is joining us virtually to provide an overview on resolution 2023-05.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. As the clerk mentioned, this is the approval of the fiscal 20 fiscal year 2023 annual action plan. This is the Lakewood's virtual roadmap for how we will invest CDBG in home funds over the the coming fiscal year for CDBG in home. The process is kind of the or this is kind of the culmination of a long process that involved multiple public hearings. There was three public hearings on the annual action plan. The most recent was before council on March 17th. Sorry. April 17th. There was a number of comments that that were proposed or put forward. Those have been included in the annual action plan. The most recent two comments will be included in the annual action plan once approved by council. There are no changes from the original plan as as reviewed by council on March 27th. The annual action plan includes two funding sources, as I mentioned, CDBG and home. CDBG includes $542,464 in an annual allocation. $3,958.16 in reallocation of 2021 admin funds. It includes $100,000 in CDBG major home repair program income and $275,000 in NSP one program income for a total of $921,422.16. The home allocation included in your agenda packet is on page 138. It includes an allocation of $341,312. That would be the Lakewood portion. There's a 10% admin that's that's awarded to Tacoma. That 10% admin would be $37,924. There's a program allocation for program income, $128,302. So total allocation for the city of Lakewood for home would be $469,614. I did want to note the home funds were being proposed to be put into the Affordable Housing Fund for Home Activities. That's a generic placeholder for home funds to develop affordable housing. There's there's not an actual allocation to any agency. It's a placeholder for future allocations and those future allocations would come back to council for approval before they're allocated. So again, before you is the fiscal year 2023 annual action plan. The the changes or so there are no changes to the plan. The the only thing that will be updated in the plan is is in the comment section. There's there's some sections in there that that have some some future tenses where annual action plan will be this or public hearings will be held. Those will be changed to were and was is and when the when the plan is adopted so that it reflects that the process has happened versus is in the process. So with that, I turn it back to council if they have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gum. Any questions for Mr. Gum? Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Gum on table two.
Yes.
Affordable Housing Fund for $69,000 you referred to, it indicates in the the last column LASSA project, 25 households. It's that seems inconsistent with the statement you just made that it was a holder.
I apologize. That would be a typo. I I did forget to take that out. That was originally where we were going, but I I would propose that be stricken from the memo. I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further questions of Mr. Gum? Well, thank you, Mr. Gum. Very good work. I looked at the entirety of the 1.4 million approximately investment in housing and housing related activities in Lakewood. Again, significant investment that we're making through good stewardship on your behalf and your staff. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Branstad. Do you have a question or do you want to make a motion?
I was just going to move move the resolution.
That would be fabulous, Mr. Branstad.
I move adoption of resolution 2023-05.
Thank you very much, sir. It's been moved by Councilmember Branstad that we adopt resolution 2023-05, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Any further discussion? Mr. Bokey.
Yeah, I I will I will support your remarks there, Mr. Mayor. I think that when you look at the CDBG and the the home dollars here, it really does reflect Lakewood in in a lot of ways, especially how much is going to to major home repair and into housing rehab, which has always been high on the list and as a as a priority for this council. And I know this is a lot of work, so I want to thank Mr. Gum and his staff and all the folks who participated in and made their comments into this process. It is a it is a cumbersome but very worthwhile process, I think. And and I think that they've come up with a very good plan that really does reflect the priorities and values of this council.
Thank you, Mr. Bokey. Any further comments? I just would reiterate my thanks to Mr. Gum as well and to staff for putting this together. It's a lot of work and it's good investment into the community. Absentate for the discussion, all those in favor of adoption of resolution 2023-05 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution 2023-05 has been adopted. We now turn unfinished business. Mr. Coffield.
No unfinished business, Mayor.
Very good. New business. Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2023-51, approving American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library.
Thank you very much. And for this, we're calling on our assistants to to the city manager, Michael Vargas, to give us an overview on what we have studied at some length during the study session. Mr. Vargas.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Michael Vargas here to review the described motion, and I'm starting on page 191 of your packet. So you are correct that the city council has reviewed the Dolly Parton Imagination Library program and its implementation details here in Lakewood at your April 17th regular meeting. However, to give a quick synopsis for tonight's purposes, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library mails a free age appropriate book to enrolled children every month from birth to age five, regardless of household socioeconomic status. This program serves the public purpose of access to books during critical years for literacy. And this is particularly important in this public purpose here in Lakewood, considering the status of the city's branch of the Pierce County Library. Now, this in this national program, it is quite common for civic organizations to take the lead in implementing it. And here in Lakewood, the Rotary Club of Lakewood would implement the program, which they have requested is 76, 77,426 dollars in ARPA monies to get the program off the ground and running over the next five years, which is understood to start in June of 2023 to June of 2028. So within the first three program years, that is June 2023 to June 2026, the requested 77,426 dollars in ARPA monies completely funds the program starting in the fourth program year, June 2026 to June 2027. The remaining roughly $20,000 in ARPA monies would be spent by the ARPA program federal deadline of December 31st, 2026. So attached to the motion is the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lakewood and the Rotary Club of Lakewood that implements the partnership to bring the Imagination Library to the Lakewood community. So this MOU commits the city of Lakewood to provide these 77,426 dollars in ARPA monies to the Rotary Club of Lakewood to implement the program as described. And rather than reread the memorandum of understanding, which is short and sweet, I'm clocking in at one page here. I'm sure city council members have already reviewed it. So with that, I invite any questions or comments from the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Any questions by any member of council? Mr. Anybody? No? Well, very good, sir. Thank you for your work on this. Thank you for your coordination with the Rotary Club of Lakewood. For bringing this certainly quality opportunity and investment to us for consideration. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt motion 2023-51?
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Laura Sella, that we adopt motion number 2023-51, approving the American Rescue Plan Act funding for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Is there any further discussion on the side of Mr. Bokey than Mr. Branstad?
One of the best things that we've done in a long time. We do go a lot of great things here, as you mentioned, some of the projects that we're supporting tonight. But I really do feel like this is where we finally get involved and finally found something we could do to really get involved in the in the educational development of children. And so I'm really, really proud of this community for in in Lakewood Rotary for for embracing this. And I'm proud of this council for jumping in on it.
Thank you, Mr. Bokey. Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, in fact, and I concur with Councilmember Bokey that this is one of those best things we've done in a long time. We have a long history of doing things for youth, but not in this particular range. And this is a chance for us to do something meaningful. And not only for the youth, but the nature of the program of when you provide books to a one year old, you're providing books to a parent to read to a one year old. And there's a there's a there's a strengthening of families apart from literacy. However, I would like to propose an amendment and I would move to amend the MOU to replace recital number three with the following wording. The Pierce County Library System has closed its main branch in the city of Lakewood and is currently providing limited alternate public access to books. Addition of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program furthers efforts to fill this accessibility gap in the community.
Thank you. And and before I ask for a second tier motion, my only clarifying question for you, Mr. Branstad, because this is going to be a MOU that exists not just this year, but the next few years, right? So when it says the Pierce County Library System has closed, we want to say has temporarily closed because we've heard that they're going to be constructing an interim library down the street. And we don't want to leave the impression that there is a complete vacuum of Pierce County Library Services in Lakewood in 2024, 25, 26 or 27.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm my view is that this is an MOU that is describing the situation today that I don't have a date when there's actually going to be a new main library to do that. So I'm 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 satisfied with the wording I proposed.
Okay, I just raised the issue. Is there a second to Mr. Branstad's motion to amend the MOU as indicated? It's been seconded by Mr. Bokey that we amend the MOU as indicated with the language. Mr. Branstad articulated. Any further discussion?
I I, Mr. Mayor, let me just say that the amendment is not necessarily to change the meaning. But the idea was that I think that the draft language for an MOU that is advancing a literacy program was a little bit awkward. And I'm just looking to ma- ma- make it read more appropriately.
Absolutely. I I I get that. Any further discussion on the proposed amendment to the MOU with the language as indicated by Mr. Branstad? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment to the MOU has been adopted. We now turn to motion 2023-51 as amended. Any further discussion? Before we vote, I just want to state for the record, I am the president of Lakewood Rotary. I've been an advocate of this program. I've been an advocate and an active supporter of it. I have no pecuniary or financial interest in it whatsoever. And so I don't believe that I am required to recuse myself from voting on this particular action item, but I wanted to clarify that for the record. Mr. Anderson?
Well, I also remember Lakewood Rotary and advocate of this, but it it with no personal financial interest and I will vote on it. I think I'm an example of what reading to kids at this level could do. And a 20 year old mother, we didn't have any mu- a lot of money, a nuclear family that was intact. She went out on a limb and bought a set of books called Childcraft. Some of you may be old enough to know that, about 15, 18 books. I knew by the time I went to kindergarten, I knew every nursery rhyme fairy tale. I knew all the pictures of the moon before anybody walked on the moon and about comments and science and travel. And she had some books at the end that how to get your child ready for school. I got to school, I could I could read. I it just happened. And so and it opened up so many avenues. Every child deserves that. So I'm really happy to be able to support this.
Absolutely. Do you have a comment, Deputy Mayor? No, we don't have to. No, you can just state you're also a member if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also a member of the Lakewood Rotary and I have no financial gains in this. Alabman, thank you. I vote favor of.
And before I call for the question, any further discussion, I just want to echo Councilmember Anderson's comments. I think most of us who went through the public school system as kids, at least in my genre, we had this opportunity to buy these little 25 cent books. And you could you could, you know, your parents would give you maybe a dollar, $2 and you could get like five books at school and they would come and that was a big day when those books came in and they would divvy them up to your little table and you get to take those paperbacks home. I think the the investment we are making today is a significant investment into the lives of our region, our communities, children and certainly their families here in Lakewood. It does fill the gap that's currently left a void in library services in Lakewood during, given the current status of the Pierce County Library Systems operation in Lakewood. And I think it also emphasizes many of our council goals and mission statements about creating a vibrant family centered city here in Lakewood. Early readers are early succeeders. And I think any one of us as a council member has had the luxury, if you will, of being able to be an early reader. And therefore we have to whatever extent been early succeeders at some point in our lives because someone gave us an opportunity to read. So it's tough. Any further discussion points? Otherwise, I'll call for the question. We already did. And we passed it. And so motion 2023-51 And so, motion twenty twenty-three dash five-one as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion twenty twenty-three dash five-one as amended has been adopted. We now turn to motion twenty twenty-three dash five-two. Madam Clerk.
Motion number twenty twenty-three dash fifty-two, updating existing and authorizing new American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding for certain internal and external uses.
Very good. Thank you. And for this, we have Mr. Ted Thielen, our ARPA intern, to give us a bit of an overview. Thank you, Mr. Thielen. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. We are on page one ninety-four of your packet. And this is motion twenty fifty, or I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three fifty-two. This motion consists of three parts. There is one allocation, and that is to the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Project, as we just discussed, and two reallocations. The first of the two reallocations of ARPA funding suggested is to the HVAC improvements to City Hall. And that would be a reallocation of five hundred thousand dollars instead of to the City Hall HVAC improvements to the one-point-eight million twenty-three, twenty-four biennium improvements to replace the existing low-efficiency boilers at City Hall with high-efficiency gas-fired condensing boilers. The second reallocation is to the Park Handwashing Stations Project. And that would be reallocating seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Park Handwash Stations Project to the American Lake Park Improvement Project. And the reason for that is that ancillary costs are prohibitive to completing the handwash station project as intended. And that would be the sewer and water outbuildings. Those sorts of extra expenses are just too expensive. And the allocation is to the Dolly Parton Project. And that would be to allocate seventy-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars of Lakewood's ARPA funds to partner with the Lakewood Rotary Club to bring the Imagination Library to Lakewood. The Lakewood funds will be used for the first three years of the program, as Mr. Vargas said, to meet the ARPA spending deadlines of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And the Rotary will cover the remaining two years of the program. And just as a summary, the current total that remains to be allocated from the ARPA funding is two million nine hundred and fifty-one thousand thirty-three dollars. And this motion allocates or reallocates six hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-six of the ARPA dollars. So, I'll take any questions?
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Thielen? This is maybe more a question, Mr. Coffield, from me, because I may not have been in here. We talked about the.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I think, I think there's some wording here. The, the City Hall Energy Audit should be an allocation of an additional five hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds.
The energy audit itself?
That's correct.
So, that would take our remaining ARPA funds down two-point-two-nine-four minus five hundred thousand, right?
That, that's correct, Mayor.
Now, have we already incurred the audit money?
That's, that's, that's correct, Mayor. And that, that's part of the carry for it as well. So, I think, yeah, it should be, it should be, it's recommended to obligate an additional half a million dollars in support of that.
Okay, so we'll need to amend the motion then.
Yes.
On that.
I'm sorry, I missed that in my review.
Okay, hold on here just a second. So, let me make sure, first of all, we don't have any other questions of Mr. Coffield on that issue. And then, we'll get a motion to amend motion twenty twenty-three dash five-two accordingly, if that's the direction of council. Mr. Branstadter, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. My question is that if this is not a reallocation, then, then the five hundred thousand dollars allocated to the HVAC system would remain allocated?
In addition to, I think.
It's, this is, it should be an additional five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. And then, can, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering whether we can do that within this motion, or do we need a? Or do we need a, a motion more in the format of the one that we just did with the, it's a new, completely new allocation? Should we make it, rather than amending this motion, should we do a motion similar to what we just did with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library? Okay. Where we approve the funding for this? And then, because this, this motion is really a sort of approving a summary of the others, like, like it does, this motion incorporates the Dolly Parton thing that was approved by a different motion. I'm just wondering procedurally whether we can allocate that five hundred by amendment to this? Or should we do a separate motion to obligate, allocate the five hundred thousand? And then, and then amendment? And if we were going to do that, then I would suggest that we wait to take final action on this motion, and we introduce a new motion to do as the city manager suggests of allocate the five hundred thousand dollars.
Let's get some feedback from the city attorney real quick.
Councilmember Branstadter, members of the council. As I understand what you're asking, there's a degree to which it doesn't completely matter. You're not going to make a completely wrong choice. However, that being said, one of the things I focus on is someone's ability to track the legislative history of what you've done. And so, if they're truly separate, somebody might look at each separate allocation and not understand that they're part of a whole. Whereas if you do something to connect them, and it can be by reference, or it can be by amending what's before you. But the legislative history is there for your citizens when they want to figure out what you've been doing.
So, should the motion, just for clarification, under the recommendation, reference a reallocation of that five hundred thousand or a recognition of the obligation of the five hundred thousand for the audit?
It would be the latter, Mayor.
Okay. That provides some clarity. And if so, can I have a motion to amend motion twenty twenty-three dash five-two to reflect the recognition of the allocation of the five hundred thousand dollars for the energy audit for the City Hall Building? So, moved. Been moved by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Bokey that we amend motion twenty twenty-three dash five-two to reference and incorporate the obligation of a five hundred thousand dollar expenditure for the energy audit previously performed for the City Hall Building. Is that correct, Mr. Coffield? Okay. Any further discussions on the motion to amend? If not, all those in favor of the motion to amend our motion twenty twenty-three dash five-two as indicated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The amendment has passed. We now turn to motion twenty twenty-three dash five-two as amended. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of adoption of motion twenty twenty-three dash five-two as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion twenty twenty-three dash five-two as amended has been adopted. We just need to make sure when we indicate in the final packet that the fiscal impact and the ARPA funding remaining fund number is accurate based upon the amended motion. Okay? Very good. That concludes the motions we have before us under new business tonight. We now turn to reports by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. First, I'd like to call upon our city attorney, Heidi Walker, to give you an update on, well, actually, kind of next steps in addressing the issue of drug possession, given the state legislature did not address the Blake decision. The result of that is that as of July first, the current possession statute that the state temporarily has in place will expire, making it legal to possess drugs here in Washington State. However, that does open the door for cities and counties to be able to take action to address this themselves. And your city attorney is in the process of developing an option that she'd like to, and a recommendation that she'd like to cover with you and bring back at your next regular meeting for your review.
Good evening, Mayor Whelan, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council, Heidi Walker, city attorney. You cannot have listened to the news or read a newspaper without knowing that we have this looming deadline of July first. And one of the questions that came up in a recent AWC briefing on this was, well, is there the possibility that the legislature will at least extend their deadline? Will they maybe say, whatever's in place right now, we want to keep that in place until we decide something else? And AWC's representatives were indicating they don't think that's the case. And as they walked us through sort of a rendition of what's happened with the legislature, they have a very involved flow chart talking about all the back and forth, which I have opted not to share with you because I believe it's essentially an exercise in rabbit hole exploration. And what it boils down to is you have two very divided camps. And it's the camp that thinks, you know, a more humane touch, a more treatment-oriented, not stick, use all carrots, that sort of thing. And the other camp saying, this is having a severe impact on our communities, and we don't mind the idea of treatment, but it needs to have something to compel people to get the treatment. And so, between those two camps, we're just not getting any harmonization. With regard to the idea of whether or not the governor will kick it back to the legislature, do an additional session and so forth, there is a possibility of that. It's a stronger possibility than whether or not the legislature would keep the current preemption in place. But essentially, the consensus seems to be that there is room for cities to do something here. And in fact, this council did do something several years ago. And what you passed at that time was a drug possession ordinance that closed up that hole that Blake had, had focused on. Blake focused on the idea that if somebody was possessing drugs unknowingly, then they could still be convicted because of the way the state law was written. It didn't require that the possession be knowingly. So, what we did in the City of Lakewood was adopt a very simple, straightforward, it's a crime in the City of Lakewood to knowingly possess drugs. When we realized we were being preempted by the state, we followed up with ordinance five seventy-five, I believe it was, that we repealed it because we knew we were being preempted. My recommendation would be, take what you passed at the time, come back and pass it to take effect July first. You'd want to take action in May because it has that thirty days to take effect and go forward in that way. Now, if the legislature manages to come up with something in the meantime, we can do what we did before. If we have to repeal it, we can repeal it. One of the things I say in City Hall, I don't typically say it here at the dais, but I will tell you, in terms of the laws that you have control over, you can change your laws on any given Monday night. You know? So, I mean, if you've got that idea, there was some move afoot about what kind of a message we wanted to send to the governor and the legislature. It doesn't get much stronger than actually adopting an ordinance to take effect July first. So, I'm just going to check my notes quickly. I will tell you the one slide I did like in the presentation from AWC because it was very simple. It's a slide that the title says, what happens next? If the legislature does nothing, the current law, that law that preempted our action on drug possession, would expire July first. There would be no state law, so the preemption's lifted, and local governments can pass their own ordinance. If the legislature does something, the governor has indicated he'll call a special session if the legislature can come to an agreement. And then, AWC will remain engaged and advocate for cities. At that point, we're watching to see what happens. I listened to Cairo in the morning, and they had the spokesperson for the King County Prosecutor's Office saying that the position that they're taking is to wait and see what the governor's going to do. Given your ability to change your law, if that becomes necessary, given what this council has said before, this is the same council that adopted a public use on drugs ordinance. And that one was also very simple. We didn't get into the treatment aspects or anything like that. It simply says, if you're doing drugs in public, that's a violation of the law. Given those things, I, I don't think that there would be a problem with you adopting something in May. I will tell you, that would put you on a par with what I'm hearing from Fife, Marysville, and Puyallup. There are cities that have imposed a lot more language, some of it around treatment. If this council chose to build in a treatment component or something akin to a heavy probation aspect, anything like that is beyond what we're currently providing in terms of city services. And it would be something that we would want to study and bring back to you in terms of what resource allocation would be required to do justice to it. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Remind us on, if we bring back the old legislation, I don't recall whether we just had it as a misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor, but I think the consensus of council from the last meeting was to move this forward at the gross misdemeanor level.
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure what it was at that time. I can tell you now, hearing that from the council, it will come back to you as a gross misdemeanor.
Great. Unless there's any other direction, Mr. Anderson.
Because I just read her old version.
So, it was a gross misdemeanor back then?
It was a gross misdemeanor when we passed it last time. It was the one that was preempted.
Okay. So, we'll bring it back as a gross misdemeanor. Any further questions or direction to the city attorney? I think we're on the right track. Sooner the better, even if it was done effective June eighteenth for my birthday or something, that would be great. But if it has to be July one, that would be fine, too.
The only closing comment I have is that I am a member of the Clover Park Rotary, and I need to say that because after all the announcements about Lakewood Rotary, I'm going to get fined on Wednesday, so.
Good, good. I'll let them know to make it a large fine. Very good. Anything else, Mr. Coffield?
Just real quick, Mayor, also coming forward on your May fifteenth meeting, and we'll be, we bring forward a proposal for council to consider the transfer of the property of the Old Settler Cemetery that currently is owned by Pierce County to the City of Lakewood for one dollar. It's four-point-two-four acres, and it's located on Washington Boulevard. So, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Also, Partners for Parks, as you are aware, is undertaking a capital campaign to raise three-and-a-half million dollars in support to help finance the historic H Barn Restoration Project. They've asked for an opportunity to come and give you a presentation. We understand that the purpose of this presentation is to get your feedback, and perhaps you're okay for them to, as they're securing donations, to be able to provide certain naming rights within the building once it is constructed. Basically, they're requesting naming rights specific to their capital campaign efforts. I know I was talking to Councilmember Branstadter earlier today, and he inquired, well, is that different and outside of our regular naming rights? And the short answer is, yes, it is. So, just wanted to alert council to that as, as, as well. Also, wanted to let you know that the Public Works Engineering Department will be moving forward with the Wahop Lake alum treatment. This is the third application. We had hoped to do it last summer to address the algae. However, majority of alum comes out of the Russian Federation, AKA the Soviet Union. By the way, I'm also a member of the Lakewood Rotary Club. And the, the prices, because of the war over there, was just way too expensive. So, we put it off for a year. So, we're hoping to do it in the June timeframe. So, the Public Works Engineering Department is going to be going out for an RFP here in the near future if they haven't actually already done it. So, just wanted to give you a heads up, and would like to get it done before Summer Fest and all the major activities that are occurring down there. Also, wanted to let you know that you have received three applications to serve on your independent salary commission. There's a requirement of five, so we're still seeking two other additional applicants for the mayor to consider recommending to be appointed to that commission sometime this year. Sooner the better. So, if you know of some folks who are interested in serving, please, please let us know. And I want to thank Councilmember Laura Sella for appointing an individual in our direction as well. I know the last couple of weeks, I have given you ad nauseam updates on the state capital budget. I just have one last item to give you an update on. I think I had noted that we had received funding through both the operating budget and the capital budget on a number of fronts. We also received funding through the transportation, through the state's transportation budgets. We also received funding through the transportist, through the state's transportation budget, specifically uh safe routes to schools, and um that is for one twelve street improvements adjacent to Lake Louise Elementary School between Holden and Far West uh to the tune of one point one four million dollars. And uh so that's a project that will now rise to the top of the next couple of years along the lines of the contract that the council just approved um for sidewalks adjacent to Clover Park um High School. So um just wanted to uh give you an update on that. Um, as it relates to your calendar, um, the um, I know several of you will be uh visiting um our sister city Gimhee in the Republic of Korea later this week, and it's early next week. Um, however, on Wednesday, the um, at um, over over at the McGavick Center, the city of Lakewood will have a table for the annual meeting of the Economic Development Board for the Tacoma Pierce County, and I know several of you will be attending that, as well as a number of city's personnel. Um, on May fourth, next uh this Thursday at six PM, um will be the annual memorial uh ceremony on honoring fallen law enforcement officers killed on the line of duty, and that is going to be at Bethany Baptist Church in Puyallup, um and that kicks off at six PM. And I know a couple of council members who are still going to be here will be will be attending that. Um, also, um, this um um weekend on May sixth, uh Caring for Kids is going to be having an open house and a collectible sale over at their facility on on Kendrick from nine AM to two PM. And so if you have an opportunity, feel free to drop by and say hello to those great folks. Um, and then next week on May eleventh, on um, on uh Thursday, Thursday morning at Eagles Pride Golf Course, will be the um SSMCP Elected Officials Council, and I know a number of you have been um are are planning on attending that. Um, and then next weekend is the uh kids fishing event for ages five through fourteen at Harry Todd Park at the brand new dock that opened just a couple of years ago. And uh so it's my understanding that uh the little kiddies are guaranteed to get themselves a fish. So um, so always a very successful um event. Um, and then lastly, um, just wanted to let you know that the Lakewood uh Water District Board of Commissioners uh did confirm that um a joint meeting on June sixteenth between six and seven in advance of your study session will work for them. So uh with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Caulfield? Ms. Councilmember Lorsella?
All right, I just a quick go back on the drug possession proposed ordinance that may be coming forward. Uh, would that supersede a use ordinance? Because I don't know that it'd be possible to use something without possessing it.
So yeah, Councilmember Lorsella, so they're actually, they're separate. You already have an ordinance in place to deal with use, so now this one would focus specifically on possession. I would just add that that ordinance went into effect at least today.
Great. And as a follow-up to Mr. One of Mr. Caulfield's comments, if you're not yet a Lakewood Rotarian, I can get you an application. Councilmember Lorsella?
Not yet.
All the cool kids, all I'm saying, okay?
I hear the Clover Park Rotary is also looking for.
They're cool kids, too. That's right. They all do good work. Not as cool, but they're still cool. Okay, council comments. Uh, unless anyone has any grave concerns over obtaining title to the county gravesite? When's that going to happen? We're going to transfer that ownership over in the near future?
I I just.
The west of the cemetery?
I just reported on that, Mayor.
I I picked up on the dollar thing.
Oh, the dollar, that's that's.
Yeah, I was focused on the budget adjustment.
Yeah, it's the whole, it's actually, I got the dollar right here. Actually, no, I fell out of my pocket, but I'll I'll go, I'll retrieve it. Um, uh, but no, the whole four point two, uh, four point two four acres, uh, the city attorney's been negotiating with the county um on an on a transfer agreement that we'll be bringing forward to you on May fifteenth.
On May fifteenth, okay, great.
So your next regular meet, two weeks from this evening.
Very good. Councilmember Anderson?
Just for the record, I'm recusing myself on that because of my position with the county. I I standing behind what is essential, the virtual wall at at the county and not taking part there, I'm not taking part here, so.
Very good. Okay, council comments, Councilmember Branstad, we'll start with you.
Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, my 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 plan is to attend the Economic Development Board meeting on Wednesday that um, and uh to uh attend Law Enforcement Memorial on Thursday evening, and then the um, the Executive Committee for Shape on 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 Friday. So I will be glad to see you all return.
Yeah, I'm sure. Very good.
And uh, let me just say that I, at the youth council meeting uh today, we passed on another opportunity to them that had to do with the Puget Sound Regional Council is this summer holding uh a series of days where they're invited for high school students to participate in learning about how regional and municipal planning works and see both results and and the process, being able to go and do that with the idea perhaps of sparking some interest in that as a career field, um, to being able to go and do that, which is a uh, it's kind of like nurses. There's a, there's a, there's a shortage of competent of planners uh available to governments. Um, so they they were all provided with the 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 application. Uh, if you complete the four days, um, that each completer would also get a five hundred dollar scholarship for when they do go on to college, and they don't necessarily have to go on to college to become a planner, but they they get it for 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 doing that. And it seemed like at least uh several of the the uh youth council members were interested in doing that, subject to looking at calendars, to making sure that the two dates in July and two dates in August, uh, were going to work for the their, them and their families. But that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lorsella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I want to echo what other members of council said about how proud and grateful I am that we were able to pass uh the motion to get books into the hands of of the youth uh and and young children. Uh, I remember as a as a very small child, uh, my my mom carrying in her purse the little golden books, right? And they'd go out for dinner, and they'd hand them to me, and it's probably trying to keep me quiet at the table, but it worked. And uh, uh, and then as I got into preschool in the Clover Park School District, that continued, and uh I'm grateful for that. Uh, I want to wish uh those of you who are traveling, safe travels, uh, have a good time. Yeah, I look forward to hearing what you guys accomplish while you're there, uh, once you get back. And uh, finally, I wanted to thank Parks Director Mary Dodsworth. Uh, she uh took time out of her day last week to drive me around to all of the parks in the city.
Right.
Uh, having grown up here, I had only been to about half of them uh and didn't know where they all were. So uh, she was able to identify them and and get me out to them, uh, and it was great to see all of the progress and projects that are in work at all of our parks. So it's very impressive. Thank you. Uh, and that's it.
Great, well, thank you. Councilmember Bokey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of remarks, um, and actually, I wasn't going to say much, but um, I do want, but I will speak a while since it's early.
Sure.
Um, I want to mention this, this, we get this senior thing that I guess they send out to all seniors who participate at the Lakewood Senior Center. But as you may know, we don't have a physical location for a senior center. But I, and we happened for for some time, and I know they're working on that. Um, but I do want to share, and I don't know that um that I was sent an email, um, and I sent it to the city manager, and I don't know if you all saw it or not, but that the Lakewood Senior Center actually is one of the busiest centers. Um, yet even given those challenges, when you, when the the county makes counts of unique customers or unique participants, and and I believe the, that what the information I had was that the Lakewood seniors was the second busiest of the senior centers. So I really do appreciate the work that the Parks Department has done, Mary Dodsworth, as you mentioned, um Elizabeth and any of the other folks that worked there, and what they've been able to accomplish in in a in a pretty tough situation. And I, and I'm glad that we support them, and um, and they do get some support from the county that I know of, but what what a, what a really nice job they do. And I think that's all I'm going to talk about, thanks.
Very well. Councilmember Anderson?
So I had attended the monthly meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council uh Executive Board, and um, it's fairly routine, a lot of niceties. And then a, just to show you what what is considered minor, uh, there were minor amendments to the tip um, which didn't involve the funding, they just involved the authorization to. And you know, there's an addition of another twenty million dollars on the horizon for sound transit as a minor amendment. Uh, presumably, they're going to get that money from the feds. And that if uh you're so inclined, uh, register for the General Assembly, which is going to be May thirtieth at uh Hotel in Pioneer Square.
That's all. Very good. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and on this weekend, I attended the uh vibrant schools uh program. They have a program called Purge to Surge. And the keynote keynote speaker was Matt Calvin, who was a former basketball player for the Denver Nuggets. He was outstanding. Was really good, uh, good. They were establishing their uh goals for the next two years, now that they are five oh one C three, so. It was very interesting, and um I attended the basketball game between the cops and the students, um, at St. Thompson, cops and teachers the other day. That was a lot of fun. Uh, glad the police office won this time since they have won for several years, so thank you.
Great. Well, I was trying to make it by nine, but now I've got thirty minutes worth of comments, so it's going to be a little longer, so. Yeah. And now I got Bokey leaving the podium. The Losa Fundraising Breakfast I went to last Wednesday, several of you were present. It was a great event, well-attended, and it celebrated uh the uh retirement and leadership of Jan Hutchins and the new leadership of the new executive director that's been hired. So we're all hopeful for continuing good things with the agency. That was on the heels of the legislature, as you know, passing five hundred thousand in the capital budget for Loser. We're still waiting to hear back from the feds on the two point five million dollars that's moving forward in the congressional allocation. But uh, we'll see if the government has any money on or before July one. Apparently, somebody by the name of Yellen thinks that they may run out of cash. Eh. Minor problems. Um, on Thursday, I hosted an information event at Lakewood Gardens for those interested in learning more about the uh, the new services center and the uh kind of the engagement um carriage house that's going to be revamped. It's a three point two million dollar project. They've already raised two point nine million of it, significant capital investments from various grant sources. So it's a good project that's moving forward, and people were sort of happy to hear about how Lakewood is transitioning in from just a garden, which many people think of it is, uh, to really a center for art and culture and music here in the city of Lakewood. They had a wonderful art display there, had a big crowd, and uh, you know, it's a, it's a good gem. We do support it with lodging tax, so more to follow on that, but it's a project that's moving forward. I'll be at the Gimhee event this week, so I look forward to that. Um, I just want to close by, again, reiterating my thanks to Mr. Caulfield and Ms. Kraus and all of the executive team members who through the various legislative pieces that we reviewed and passed tonight, have done yeoman's work in helping execute on, I think, uh, really solid policy decisions of this council to further significant investment in this community by way of infrastructure, parks, uh, housing to the tune of one point four plus million dollars. We heard about that tonight, and uh early literacy. So you know, I really hope that those folks who come and listen don't necessarily have to read the hundred and ninety-six pages that we read to prepare for tonight, but recognize that this city and that the executive leadership of Mr. Caulfield and his staff is doing an excellent job. So thank you very much. And unless there are any alibis, Mr. Bokey?
Mr. Caulfield really needed that, you know, support. He's had a, he's had a rough week because his beloved Bruins.
Oh, yes, indeed.
Who are, who are already like polishing, putting in, the Bruins were supposedly, you know, picking a place for another Stanley Cup in there. That is a trophy case.
He needed a pat on the back. I have him in Boston. Especially when you go to a lesser university back there, and I don't know, it's one of those things that happens. I guess we're adjourned.